Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 13th meeting of the Upper Darby School Board of Directors. The first item on the work session agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance by the DCIU Veterans Day Essay Contest winner, BHMS 6th Grade Student Madison Luther.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The second item on our work session agenda is an Upper Darby Arts and Education Foundation Bravo Award presented by Tamara Crump.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tamara Crump. I am a member of the Upper Darby Arts and Education Foundation Board, and tonight I have the pleasure of doing something that is one of my favorite responsibilities as a board member, and that is to present the Bravo Award. The Bravo Award is a unique opportunity that community members have to acknowledge someone in the educational field who has made a difference in their lives or the lives of their children. Tonight, I have the pleasure of giving this award in honor of Ms. Judith Gentile, who has been honored by a member of the Upper Darby community for dedication, inspiration, and outstanding educational contributions to the children of the Upper Darby School District for the 2018-2019 school year.
The third item on our work session agenda tonight is a presentation by the Hillcrest Elementary School Principal, Mrs. Kristen O'Neil.
Good evening, President Mitchell, Dr. McGary, members of the school board, and members of the Upper Darby School District and community. I am Kristen O'Neil, and I am the principal of Hillcrest Elementary School. It is an honor for me to stand before you and highlight some of the wonderful things that are happening at my school this year. It really was difficult to narrow it down to just one thing to feature this evening, but I did choose to focus on a partnership that Hillcrest Elementary School had with the Transportation Management Corporation, where they provided some education around pedestrian safety with a culminating activity of a Walk to School Day, which many people in this room attended. I don't want to explain too much about that partnership because it's all detailed for you in the video that we're about to show. However, one of the highlights of Hillcrest Elementary School is we have a very active parent community with a large number of people who participate in the many events that we have throughout the school year. So, the one thing I do want you to pay attention to in the video are the large numbers of people that did come out to support us during this event. That partnership with the parents and with the school is what makes Hillcrest so unique and so special. So, I hope you enjoy the video clip, and thank you for coming tonight.
So, I was contacted over the summer because Hillcrest was chosen to partner with the Delaware County Transportation Management Corporation in order to offer our students and families some education around safety, especially in regard to pedestrian safety.
This program is called Walk to School Day. So, it's a national organization that does these programs across the United States.
It was a good opportunity to reach many children who potentially could be walking to and from school each day. We have over 700 kids who go to the school, 500 of which are in the area, I guess, that they could potentially walk.
So, I thought, hey, this would be a great school to do it, and I contacted Upper Darby School District, and they put me in contact with Hillcrest.
It was two parts. The first part was for Ally and her team to come to our school and do mini lessons at each grade level, kindergarten through 5th grade, around what pedestrian safety is.
I've learned to be more safe.
We just went over like when it's safe to cross, and we answered some questions.
We had to name like a crosswalk, a traffic light, a stop sign.
It was just about practicing what we were gonna do.
The second part was to put those skills into action.
They had a chance to really show their skills that they learned.
We went to Dermont, and then we came to Hillcrest practicing being safe.
We was walking to school as a whole team.
We practiced as a community with parents and guardians and children.
The kids that were in the front row line with me, they made sure they stopped looking and listened.
Everybody looked both ways, and they listened for cars and stuff.
They said thank you to the police officers, so they were really great while walking to school.
If anything, I think it has brought an awareness to pay close attention to what's happening around you.
They get to learn about traffic safety, and even on not Walk to School Day, they practice this every day. So, I think it's something they can learn from and use it as they grow.
We had so much fun, Dr. Taylor and I participating, and I got to see a lot of my neighbors who normally drive their kids to school, so it was a great time. The final item on our work session agenda tonight is a presentation by the Beverly Hills Middle School Principal, Mr. Brian Orson.
Good evening, school board, administration, and staff, and members of the community. I am Brian Orson, principal of Beverly Hills Middle School. With me tonight are Jen Westrop and Shelley Haley. Jen and Shelley are our PBIS coaches and Tier 2 facilitators. Also with us is Dina Moscone, who is a counselor at BH. She is our Tier 3 co-chairperson and Tier 2 and 3 co-facilitators. We want to highlight our PBIS Tier 2 and 3 programs for you tonight, as well as the role mindfulness plays in our school at all tier levels. These interventions are put into place to teach our students important skills that they will use throughout their lives, as well as to foster and establish relationships with our students. We are proud of the gains our students are making as a result of their participation in these programs. Our creative and caring staff members should be commended for their efforts and diligence in understanding the needs of individual students and finding the best fitting support for every student who needs it. Please enjoy BH supporting students mindful.
Our tier system is Tier 1, that's for everybody.
They're getting all the lessons for behavior, so that goes to everyone.
Tier 1 is when you're good. Tier 2 is like, say you get suspended like three times, that's Tier 2. Say you get more suspensions, you get to Tier 3 and Tier 4.
It's basically ranking from, you know, good to bad.
We identify them through some data points and some teacher input.
If they're excessively late with no excuse, they're almost like truant. If they're in trouble a lot with Tier 3 and Tier 4 infractions, those are the students that would pop to us through the data, and then we bring them to a group, which we meet once a week, and we go through.
And try to find some good interventions that may be appropriate for them to try to help them succeed.
For instance, if it looks like they might need just an adult to connect to, we'd put them with a mentor, and like our teachers volunteer to do that.
I used to see Ms. Westrop personally. She used to call me out of my classes once a week so we could talk about my grades and catch up and stuff like that.
They check in on behavior and grades and just general trying to form that relationship that maybe the kid is missing elsewhere in their life.
We have something with coaching, which is with Jen Westrop and Shelley Haley, and they'll come into a classroom and actually speak to the students through the Apple Watch.
And the teacher, real time, coaches the student in the class, so it's like a texting to the watch.
And the student will see that and get back on task, and actually, the students have been pretty responsive to it.
There's some feedback and dialogue after the session with maybe some goals to work on. This is what I saw you doing well, let's work on this next time. We also have some yoga mindfulness type of groups. The idea of mindfulness is really just awareness. Students and teachers invite us into classrooms voluntarily, and we teach a series of short, mini, 5 to 10-minute mindfulness lessons for a few weeks.
They'll work on just being mindful of, you know, what they're doing, what they're saying, how they're acting.
The mindfulness stuff, it kind of just tells you, be good, love yourself, be great.
If we have students who tend to be like more on the aggressive side, just seem like very anxious and all the time, you know, she does yoga with them so that they can relax.
To try to get a handle on how to control those things a little bit better in dynamic situations. Trying to just give them some kind of set of tools to use, hoping that maybe they don't end up in Tier 2. They can get it beforehand and have that little skill set to use if they choose to.
So, there's a lot of different interventions in the Tier 2 system.
And if Tier 2 is not quite working out for a student, they move to a Tier 3 intervention.
The Tier 3 kids are meeting with someone every single day.
It's not really saying that you're bad, but it's kind of like, it's saying that you kind of need help in the behavior department. You come and you talk about your behavior, what's expected of you, what's not expected of you.
For my Tier 3, the curriculum is called "The Zones of Regulation." That is all about emotional regulation with students.
We kind of learn how to control our anger and kind of try to just do the best we can.
We categorize our emotions in different zones, there's four zones.
We give them like just a toolbox of how to deal with things, baby steps in how to think about what's going on, how they can fix it, what they can do instead, things like that.
And when that student finds themselves feeling anxious or worried or whatever that emotion is, they learn to reference that toolbox that they create.
It does help, I think, because it helps you keep on track.
You have goals to meet, and I feel like when kids meet those goals, then they're like, oh, okay, I can do this, and they start to do it more often, and it turns into a routine.
The data speaks by itself. If you look at our data, we track every child, and they go down. You know, not every single kid, but I would say for the majority of them, they go down.
A lot of kids are now probably doing better than what they were doing before.
We reevaluate every six to eight weeks, and if the behaviors are decreasing and we're seeing an improvement, we have graduated people out, we celebrate them, we still keep a watch, we still keep that door open between them and say the mentor, or them and the, whatever the intervention was.
Is that where they know like it's just not cut and dry or done?
We really are trying our best to help motivate students, but in the end, it's when that student wants to make that change for themselves is when you see the best results.
If a student needs help, then you should give them help. If you want them, if you want to see somebody do better, then try, at least try your best to make them do better. But they also have to learn for themselves.
It's meant to be a resource for help, and if they choose to take it, if we can reach them, then there is positive there. It may not look like a glowing change in a moment, but we watch the little things. There's a little decrease here, a little decrease here, and it shows.
So, as you can see, we are willing to try just about anything to connect with children, to meet them where they are and find a way for them to find their intrinsic motivation for change and better choices. If you recall the footage where the kids were stamping bracelets and coloring motivational messages, this was our first ever Tier 2, 3 social event. We felt that we needed to allow the kids that are receiving Tier 2 and 3 supports to see each other. Oftentimes, these groups are small and isolated, and when they walked in the room and saw, I heard a couple of them say, oh, you get this too, and they could see that this isn't just me, there's a lot of people that are getting this help. We invited their parents, and our first event was a brunch, and their parents and themselves and us shared a meal, engaged in some motivational activities and conversation. And Jen is going to read a short letter that one of the parents wrote regarding, one of the parents who attended that morning regarding her son's progress.
My name is Carmella Hill. My son Najib Ali Hill Lee attends Beverly Hills Middle School, and he is an 8th grader this year. My husband and I have both seen a big change in his attitude and behavior. This school year has been good as far as his behavior. He is much more open about what is on his mind, and he's trying to figure out what he can do better to stay out of trouble. Najib talks to me more this school year about almost everything, and I'm so thankful for that. I really appreciate all of the teachers and principals who are working every day with the kids. I love the Tier 2 program. It really teaches the children great problem solving, and also the children get support from the teachers and the principal. Najib has a point sheet he has to get signed after each class. His teacher and Najib discussed the kind of day he had and different strategies to help him be successful. When Najib comes home, we talk about what happened during the week, and he's much more open to problem solving. He has started to walk away from a conflict instead of engaging with another student. I have seen big change in my son. I really appreciate the support provided by the Tier 2 program at Beverly Hills Middle School. Please keep believing in kids and showing them a better way of handling different problems.
Before we finish, we have mindfulness as a basic piece of our Tier 2 and our Tier 1. We, Jen and I, go into classrooms. 18 teachers just volunteered to have us come in, and we just did a three-week session in their classrooms. So, we thought maybe you'd like to experience what we teach the kids, it'll only take a moment. So, if you will indulge us, if you're sitting in these seats, the best thing to do is slide forward a little tiny bit. The first thing that we always teach the children is a mindful seat, which is sitting up nice and tall. So, in a chair like this, it helps to sit a couple inches away from the back, and your feet are flat on the floor if that's accessible to you. Your hands will find a nice place on your lap or on your legs, and this is the hardest part to do in a room full of people, but if you feel comfortable, let your eyes drop closed. If you're not comfortable with that, you can just kind of glaze over your eyes or look down, and then with your body still and quiet, it can be a little easier to find your breathing in your body. So, you might feel it in your belly, in your chest, moving through your ribs, or just coming in and out of your nose. And as you're breathing quietly, I'm going to play a chime, and like any bell or chime, it's going to ring and slowly fade away. And all you need to do is that when you feel that you no longer hear any sound, just raise your hand or your finger in the air to let me know that you no longer hear the sound. Keeping your eyes closed, we'll bring it one more time, and this time, when you hear no longer any sound at all, instead of raising your hand, you can just open your eyes, and that will be the indication that the mindfulness session is over. What we tell the kids is mindfulness is paying attention on purpose to the present moment, and you all just did that. If you were listening for the sound to fade away, you all were successfully mindful for however many seconds. So, we try to teach the kids, if you can learn it for seven seconds or 10 seconds, you can learn it for a minute, and maybe two minutes, and maybe 10 minutes, and think about if you're more present in a conversation with a person for a minute, or in a meeting for an hour, what you might be able to bring to your life. So, thanks for having us tonight.
Thank you. I am going to call this meeting to order. The regular meeting of the Upper Darby School District Board of School Directors will please come to order. There was a closed session on October 15th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and November 12th from 6:00 to 8:00, 10:00 p.m. for the superintendent search. There was a closed session on October 23rd from 10:05 p.m. till 10:35 p.m. for personnel matters. There was another closed session on October 30th from 9:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. for personnel matters, and this evening from 6:00 p.m. to 7:35 p.m. for matters to be discussed within limitations for closed deliberations as prescribed by Pennsylvania Act 93 of 1998. For this evening's meeting, they were personnel and litigation matters. Roll call, please, Mr. Grant, I'm not sure of the floor.
Ms. Gentile.
She's excused tonight.
Mr. Des Noiers, here. Ms. Jordan.
Here.
Dr. Rucci.
Here.
Dr. Taylor.
Here.
Mr. Fields.
Here.
Ms. Curry.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Ms. Mitchell.
Here, thank you. Dr. Rucci, the approval of the minutes.
The minutes of the combined work session, regular meeting of October 9th, 2018, are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? Seeing none, roll call, please, Mr. Grant.
Mr. Des Noiers. Aye. Ms. Jordan.
Aye.
Dr. Rucci.
Aye.
Dr. Taylor.
Aye.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Ms. Curry.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell.
Aye, motion carries. The report of the secretary, Dr. Rucci.
The report of the secretary is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Are there any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, roll call, please, Mr. Grant.
Mr. Des Noiers.
Aye.
Ms. Jordan.
Aye.
Dr. Rucci.
Aye.
Dr. Taylor.
Aye.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Ms. Curry.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell.
Aye, motion carries. The report of the treasurer, Dr. Rucci.
The report of the treasurer is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Are there any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Des Noiers.
Aye.
Ms. Jordan.
Aye.
Dr. Rucci.
Aye.
Dr. Taylor.
Aye.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Ms. Curry.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell.
Aye, motion carries. We'll now have the report of our student representatives, Zoe and Sarah.
This year, I'm enrolled in Professional Field Experience, a class where I have the opportunity to work hands-on with students at Juxel Hill Middle School every day for 7th and 8th period. Through Professional Field Experience, PFE, I am lucky to be able to witness all the amazing things happening at Juxel Hill Middle School every day. At the end of October, Juxel Hill Middle School had a Breast Cancer Awareness Day. Faculty and students were told to wear pink in support of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I was unaware of the event and was completely awed when I walked into the building. It was amazing to see such a large number of teachers and students dressed in pink for the good cause. On another note, Juxel Hill Middle School, like many other schools including our own, is currently holding a Thanksgiving food drive. They had a goal of collecting more cans than last year, and each grade is competing to see which will collect the most. Seeing all of the wonderful things teachers and students are doing every day at Juxel Hill Middle School is truly amazing. In our other middle school, Beverly Hills, they are also doing some incredible things. Beverly Hills has recently taken great strides to acknowledge the grit and hard work of all of their students. They've recently honored the Student of the Month and hosted their Fall Fling. 8th grader Neel Lang was recognized last month as student making a difference in the district, and this month, 6th grader Madison Luther won second place in the DCIU Veterans Day Essay Contest. What struck out to me most at Beverly Hills was how everything was related to the climate and culture and was addressing in their PBIS lessons.
And as many of you know, on November 1st, Upper Darby High School went into a lockdown. Eventually, it was concluded that there was in fact no real threat. However, motions inside and outside the school were high as a result of the perceived threat. We would like to take the time to thank the Upper Darby Police Department for their diligent work during that time, our very own Mr. Lou Gentile, and all of our staff and students. They all kept their composure, followed procedure, and handled the situation in the most appropriate way.
The next up is the budgeted personnel and enrollment reports. They have been made available to the board and the public and are recorded as part of our record. No vote is required. And now, we'll have the report of Acting Superintendent, Dr. Dan McGary.
Good evening, board president, official members of the board, administration, teachers, staff, students, parents, and members of the community of Upper Darby School District. During the month of October and the beginning of November, I had the opportunity to meet with the Upper Darby High School students, some of whom are here tonight, participate in school leadership conference in Hershey, Pennsylvania, experience district professional development opportunities, attend our high school wall of fame ceremony. Our district has so many positives for which we must be thankful. Still, we are sometimes faced with adversity, as we experienced on November 1st, when our high school was locked down for nearly two hours. As a parent myself, I know how unnerving it is to think your children could be endangered. In fact, my own children went through an emergency lockdown incident that required police intervention recently. My oldest son was locked in a room with other children without adult supervision. My son was scared, and I too was afraid. I am thankful he came home okay, as I am sure our high school parents were on November 1st. As difficult as it must have been to sit and wait for updates, I truly appreciate the parents who allowed the police to complete their necessary investigation before lifting the lockdown. As I stated earlier, there are many positive things that came from this negative situation. Our high school students, staff, and administration responded wonderfully and put into practice all that they have learned from our annual lockdown drills. Our staff saw something and said something. I would like to repeat that. Our staff saw something and said something. Earlier this year, our students saw something and said something when there was a perceived threat on social media. This matters. We are a community looking out for the best interest of one another. Our central administrative team jumped into action to support our high school administrative team. Our bus drivers and transportation staff responded in a moment's notice to get buses available for an early dismissal. Our security and police department worked together to keep everyone safe. For all of this, and especially for the fact that no one was hurt, I am extremely grateful. We debriefed with local law enforcement, our high school team, our central office team, and our Board of School Directors. We learned a lot on November 1st about the strength of our students, our staff, our administration, and this community. Each month following our committee meetings, Dr. Manfree, Ms. Simone, Ms. Kellin, and I meet with a group of high school students to review the information we share with the public and our Board of School Directors. I really value the input of our students and their perspective on our decisions. It is refreshing to hear 9th through 12th graders and the leadership that they provide. I also meet with another group of high school students who have struggled to connect academically and in some ways socially. I am joined in these meetings by Dr. Manfree and Ms. Simone. Again, it is vital for this administration to continue to communicate and connect with students in our schools as much as possible and to provide them a forum to be heard. During these meetings, we discuss obstacles to engagement and frustrations about a path toward a personal future. We have wonderful students, and we are going to continue to find ways to help all of them reach their life goals. Members of the Board of School Directors and I were afforded the opportunity to attend the school leadership conference in Hershey. We attended workshops and breakout sessions on school safety, school law, technology and education, college and career pathways, school climate and culture, and a topic on branding. While the times the work and changes we attempt to bring forth here in the Upper Darby School District challenge the status quo and past practices, I felt confident and comfortable hearing that what we have in place for our safety and security is a strength. I was equally as pleased to identify with other school districts who are working on or who have developed plans to address the federal and state mandates related to college and career planning. Vice President Ed Brown and I had also attended a meeting on branding. There were many aspects of the presentation that spoke to me about the direction we are heading as a district. I am looking forward to the December update on our rebranding efforts. I wanted to say thank you to you as a board and this community for allowing me to attend this conference. Earlier this month, the district held professional development for our staff on several topics. I wanted to highlight two examples of the work we are doing here in Upper Darby. We held professional development with Corwin on our Equity Plan. Staff and administration went through two days of professional development. Dr. Counsel also held a parent professional development session with Corwin. We are very excited about this work and will continue to update the board and the public as we move forward with the implementation of the five-year Equity Plan. We are also committed to the goals in our comprehensive plan as we look to partner with universities. Mrs. Simone and the Upper Darby High School are working with Dr. Ethan Cross from University of Michigan and Dr. Angela Duckworth from the University of Pennsylvania on what they are calling a Toolbox Project. Members of the Upper Darby High School staff have received training, and we continue to be trained on teaching students self-control and the impact it has on a student's ability to achieve. We also celebrated our new inductees to the Upper Darby Hall of Fame. Mr. Jack Schingle, a lifelong coach and student advocate. Dr. Edwin Bedrosian, an award-winning ophthalmologist. Mr. Harry Bogonian, whose bikes have won over 100 national championships and a silver medal in the Olympics. Mr. Derek Frey, a producer who is currently working on the live-action reimagining of Dumbo for Disney. Dr. Thomas Bernhardt, who is considered one of the world's leading microbiologists. Ms. Christine Caldwell, who works for the National Security Agency in Washington, Hawaii. Dr. Lisa Capriati, who served six years in the Navy and currently works as a professor of chemistry at the Citadel Military College. And psychologist Williametta Simmons, an associate professor at Widener University Institute for Graduate Clinical Psychology and Mental Health Coordinator of Liberia Medical Mission Team. We've reached out to her as well to bring her back home to work with us on our trauma-informed care. This school district and community should be quite proud of developing such a rich history of talent and excellence. Speaking of excellence, please join me in congratulating 2018 Veterans Day Essay Contest winner Madison Luther, a 6th grader here at Beverly Hills Middle School. Madison, come on up, we're gonna put you on the spot. Madison won $150 for her second-place essay, so we're gonna put you on the spot here to read that essay for us, if you don't mind.
Freedom, it's a very powerful word, but not everyone has freedom. What even is freedom? I searched it up, and this is the definition of freedom. The power or right to act, speak, or think as one wants without hindrance or restraint. Some brave people give up their freedom to keep the world safe. These people are called veterans. On November 11th, 2018, it will be 100 years since World War I. Thank you to all the men and women who served in World War I. You all were true heroes. The war started on July 28th, 1914. It was mainly triggered by the assassination of Archduke Franz Ferdinand in Sarajevo, but that is just one of the many reasons that World War I started. Today, we honor Today, we honor you. Because of you, every night I get to go home to my family. My great-granddad, William Rocker, served in World War II. He taught his kids to honor the flag and to respect all veterans because he was a veteran. Where my grandma's family lived, army planes used to fly over, and whenever they did, my granddad would silently stop and stare. He was probably thinking back to World War II, hearing planes fly over as he was hiding in a foxhole. It must have been hard to think back to that. The time he almost died, he had a family, a baby on the way. If he had died, my family wouldn't be here. All of the veterans in the crowd have risked their lives so other families could have one. Thank you to the people in the crowd who have friends or family who are serving. Thank you all.
Thank you. Another example of excellence, our Upper Darby High School band came home Sunday evening fresh off of their first-place finish at the Cavalcade of Bands. Dr. Council, Ms. Mitchell, Mr. Brown, and I greeted the students in the Upper Darby High School parking lot as they returned from Hershey as Cavalcade of Bands Yankee Division Champions. Congratulations to the students, Mr. Cummings and his team, and also the very dedicated parents who overcame windy and cold conditions to support our students. Next month, we will recognize the UD marching rolls for this amazing accomplishment during the December Board Meeting. Finally, I'd like to congratulate the Upper Darby Royal Football Team for making the playoffs this season. While the outcome of their playoff battle wasn't what they'd hoped for, the team showed perseverance and grit. We are proud of the effort they put into the season and look forward to the Thanksgiving Day game and a win, no offense, Marshall Act, against Haverford. Board President Mitchell and members of the School Board, this concludes my report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. We're now going to have updates from our committee meetings. Mrs. Curry, the Education and People Services Committees.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. This is the summary update from the agenda from the last committee meeting. Agenda item number one was informational. It was a special education update. The Special Education Department shared an update of the work the department has been doing to improve special education services for the students of Upper Darby. The special education supervisors were introduced to the public and shared their experiences and input to the development of the department initiatives and plans for continuous improvement. The agenda item was informational only. Agenda item number two, informational as well. A, High School Schedule Action Research Group update, which required Board action, was the graduation credit recommendation. Dr. Manfree, Ms. Simone, Ms. Kelly, Ms. Mertens, and other members of the High School Schedule Action Research Group shared a comprehensive overview of the work the team has been doing to improve opportunities for all students to participate in different pathways to graduation. The public was also updated on new course sequencing in math and research and writing, among other new course considerations, as well as the benefit of balanced class size and additional opportunities for flexible grouping that would better support all students. This part of the presentation was informational only. The presentation is adjusted to reflect the correction of the minutes of each block to reflect seventy-nine minutes, not seventy-four minutes. The team also presented a proposal for Board action to provide alternative pathways to graduation to include a minimum of twenty-one credits to graduate and the many options students have while attending the Upper Darby High School. Agenda item number three was also informational. It was a safety update. And Dr. McGary and Mr. Gentile provided the Board and public with an update on the competitive grant that was recently submitted to improve safety measures within the district. Mr. Gentile also updated the Board and public on the safety drills that were conducted in district schools. This item was informational only. We had several public comments, one on Agenda Item One, and we had about seven, no, we had about ten on Agenda Item Two. And that concludes the Educational and People Services Committee meeting from October twenty-third.
Thank you, Mrs. Curry. A detailed summary of the Education and People Services Committee, as well as the Finance and Operations summary, along with all the public comments that were expressed, are available on our Board Docs. Dr. Taylor, would you please go over the Finance and Operations Committee meeting?
The Finance and Operations Committee met on October twenty-third. Our Agenda Item Number One required Board consensus, and it was the replacement of four hundred seats in the Performing Arts Center. Mr. Dietzer, the Performing Arts Center Director, discussed the needs to replace four hundred and four Orchestra Street seats in the Performing Arts Center. A request was made of the School Board of Directors to provide consensus to seek bids. The Board provided consensus to move forward. Agenda Item Number Two, Board consensus was also required here. Request to go to RFP for Architect Engineering Firm for the UD High School C-Wing bathrooms. Funds will be limited to the remaining one point two million from the two thousand eighteen bonds issued in July. Mr. Grant, CFO, discussed with the School Board of Directors the financing of the two thousand eighteen governmental obligation bonds and projects costs that have been previously approved. There is approximately one point two million in funds remaining from the bond insurance. Recommendation was made to dedicate this amount to the restoration of the UDHS C-Wing bathrooms. The Board provided consensus to move forward with the project. Agenda Item Number Three was just informational, and it was a Facilities Committee update. Dr. McGary discussed with the School Board of Directors information provided by Bynett and Associates related to the facility study and the costing out of two models for major capital improvements at Beverly Hills Middle School and Drexel Hill Middle School to meet the educational specification design approved by the Board. The construction for models and cost were discussed with the Board. Construction costs related to the projects are a little over sixty-eight million for Beverly Hills Middle School and about seventy million for Drexel Hill Middle School. In the last Agenda Item, a Board consensus required. RFP results, request for costing out of the middle school building. Administration shared the results of the RFP for selection of an architect firm to cost out a third middle school on land owned by the district in Clifton Heights. Recommendation was made to conduct interviews of three selected firms by the committee, co-chairs, and administration. The Board provided consensus to move forward with this. There were no public comments, and that was the rest, that was the end of our committee.
Mrs. Curry, the Instruction and Curriculum Report. The Instruction and Curriculum Report is now in the hands of each Board Member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption. Are there any comments from the Board? Comments from the public? Please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and keep your comments to a three-minute timeline.
Hello, my name is Nick Russo, six thirty-five Edmonds Avenue, Drexel Hill. I'm just gonna read a letter that I wrote about the lowering of the graduation requirements. First, let me restate what I said a few weeks ago at the committee meeting. My son graduated from the high school last year and was highly successful. He is in his freshman year at college and is doing very well and is thoroughly happy. I believe that Upper Darby High School amazingly prepared him for the next chapter of his life. He had five AP courses, three years of Mandarin, and was involved in multiple extracurricular activities. Sadly, if this lowering of the graduation requirements passes, I strongly feel my daughter will not follow the same path, and we as a family will be forced to either relocate or send our eighth-grade daughter to private school. I am afraid that the lowering of the standard, call it whatever you want, pathways, more choices, too many options for my daughter's future will be diminished. For example, if my child decides to take higher-level courses her twelfth-grade year, which with the current proposal doesn't exist, she will not be available, she will not be at high school, thus, courses won't be offered, so because the students are not there, they won't be offered. I know that dual enrollment has been highly published, publicized as an additional alternative, but I do not wish for my daughter to follow that path for myriad of reasons. First, it will hinder her involvement in extracurricular activities. I know from personal experience, you know, I'm teaching high school for twenty-four years, the students get frustrated by some of the obstacles that come with taking dual enrollment courses. Secondly, I believe that taking high school, high-level courses at the Upper Darby High School, whether they're honors courses or AP courses, with some of the brightest and most aspiring students that Upper Darby has to offer is far superior as compared to possibly watered-down Delaware County courses that encompass students from a plethora of high school, school districts. Another example of how this lowering of graduation requirements could affect my daughter and many other Upper Darby students is that it will ultimately impact all extracurricular activities and sports. Our district is large, and it is not plausible to think that all students who do not have any scheduled classes senior year will come back for sports practices or rehearsals or after-school clubs. Sure, if a student lives close to school, the student can easily come back to school, but whether the student lives all the way near Auburn, Sixty-Nine Street, or Havertown. My last point of emphasis is what the lowering of the standard will do to school and its reputation. If the proposal passes, our requirements to obtain a diploma from Upper Darby High School will be lower than almost every school district in Pennsylvania, including the School District of Philadelphia and all the neighboring Delaware County school districts. Imagine the future for Upper Darby students. From where did you graduate? Upper Darby. That's a school that only has twenty-one credits required for graduation. Furthermore, think about how many students will illegally try to attend Upper Darby High School because its requirements are lower than everybody else.
Mr. Russo, if you could wrap it up.
Yep, let's think, so, social media is a powerful tool, and two weeks ago, I actually posted this meeting was coming, and I would say many people actually provided information that, you know, I'm not gonna read, but it's out there in the social media world. Almost all people were not happy with the possible twenty-one-credit requirement, of course, the ramifications it can have for the future. Now, my daughter's eighth grader, it may not affect all, but it will affect the future of the school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russo. Suzanne Britis, three nineteen Austin Drive. This proposal relating to the graduation requirement reduction is not a student-focused proposal. It's an administratively-focused proposal designed to make the numbers look better on paper for accountability relating to graduation rates. This plan reduces electives and one social studies requirement. How many students do not graduate or become frustrated and choose to drop out over electives? It's more often a core requirement that creates an issue for students that leads to dropping out or not meeting their graduation requirements. Other than a student having more time to retake those problem courses, I don't see how this plan helps those students. If that is part of the intent of this plan, this creates a whole 'nother issue. Will we need more sections of core classes in order to give kids who need, who needed a second bite at the apple? If that becomes necessary, what will the consequences of that be? Will it reduce staff availability to teach electives and courses that seniors might want to have on their college transcripts? The concern that there would not be enough students to run some electives as a result of fewer students being present at Upper Darby High School if they have the option to leave after twenty-one credits or pursue dual enrollment was discussed at the last meeting. How would this situation further impact if staff was needed to teach more sections of core requirement courses? There are still so many more unanswered questions and unexplored potential consequences of this plan. This plan should not move forward at this time. Thank you, Mrs. Britis.
Hi, I'm Kirsten Russo, six thirty-five Edmonds Avenue, Drexel Hill. I believe that reducing the current credit requirements is a huge mistake. I do not believe that the majority of students will be academically or socially ready to graduate as a junior in high school. Upper Darby High School already has several pathways to graduation. A traditional college preparatory pathway already exists. DCC dual enrollment already exists. Vote tech opportunities already exist as a pathway. All of these pathways already exist, so why make changes? The proposed plan is not really about creating more pathways and supporting students along that pathway. The proposed plan is in part about state graduation requirements. School districts are pressured to show results. The proposed plan is a way for the district to show on paper that they are graduating more students. But what are you really doing for those students? You lower the standard so that students get their basic courses, but will they be well-rounded? Will they be encouraged to take extra electives to spark an interest? I think not. Another reason the administration has proposed this plan is to eventually reduce staff and programming. Less students equals less opportunity. It will be very easy to say, "Sorry, we don't have an honors class for you in that subject area. There are just not enough students. Sorry, we can't run that AP course. There are just not enough students." Electives like the choral programs and instrumental programs will slowly get smaller. The possible consequences are so far-reaching. One of the other ways that the administration is trying to spin this reduction is the DCC pathway. While I believe that this is a pathway for some, it does have its cons. Colleges look at what a high school offers. For example, if a high school offers an AP course and that same course is offered at DCC, the four-year college would rank the AP class as a higher level. This is because AP courses are tested nationally and community college courses are not. There are other cons as well. Parents need to really consider those pros and cons. With that said, all of this pathway planning can get very confusing for students and parents. Parents and students don't always know about all of the possible pathways. The Upper Darby High School already needs more counselors to help students figure out their best path. This will be an even bigger need if we are sending sixteen- and seventeen-year-olds out into the real world, graduated with three high school years under their belt. I truly believe that we should never lower the standard. It doesn't matter how you spin it. You are telling a large group of students that they don't have what it takes. They are not meeting the current requirements, so you are going to tell them, "It's okay. We are just going to lower the standard so you can graduate." Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Russo. Are there any other comments from the public? Seeing none, poll vote, please.
Mr. Des Noirs.
Aye.
Ms. Jordan.
I, the exception, lowering the requirements down to twenty-one. I do not approve that.
Dr. Ritchie.
Aye.
Dr. Taylor.
Aye.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Ms. Curry.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell.
Aye, motion carries. Next up is our policy report, Mrs. Jordan.
The policy report is in the hands of all Board members and has been made available on Board Docs. This evening, we have two policies in the first reading. The first one is policy, I don't have this in order, eight oh eight, which is food services. And the second policy is a wellness policy, which I believe is two forty-six. These policies are under review because every three years, the Pennsylvania Department of Education does perform an audit of our policies. So, we will discuss in more details the changes that are being proposed at the committee meeting on Tuesday, November twenty-seventh.
Thank you, Mrs. Jordan, and I accidentally skipped the personnel report, Dr. Taylor.
The personnel report is in the hands of each Board Member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Are there any comments from the Board?
Yes. I would like to thank all the retirees for their years of service, and especially thank Mr. Watson, who is retired and is the principal of St. Cal Elementary School. Thank you, and we wish you a happy and restful retirement.
Mr. Brown? She took care of it. Any other comments from the Board? Comments from the public? Seeing none, poll vote, please, Mr. Grant.
Mr. Des Noirs.
Aye.
Ms. Jordan.
On page nine of the report, under Professional Meetings, under the Annual Conference, that will be held in Philadelphia, if you can please remove my name from that, I approve the report for everything else.
Dr. Ritchie.
Aye.
Dr. Taylor.
Aye.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Ms. Curry.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell.
Aye, motion carries. Next up is the Facilities Report and the Use of Facilities Report, Mr. Brown.
The Facilities Report and the Use of Facilities Report are in the hands of each Board Member and has been made available to the public. I move for their adoption.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments from the Board? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, poll vote, please.
Mr. Des Noirs.
Aye.
Ms. Jordan.
Aye.
Dr. Ritchie. Dr. Taylor.
Aye.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Ms. Curry.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell?
Aye, motion carries. The finance and budget report, Mr. Des Noirs?
The finance and budget report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Any comments from the board?
Yes, I wanted to mention that the finance and budget report approval is approving an agreement between the district and Demand Music Center to put on a performance of hairspray on May 23rd, 2019, at 10:00 a.m. at Demand Music Center.
Any other comments from the board? Comments from the public? Seeing none, poll vote, please. Mr. Grant?
Mr. Des Noirs?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Ritchie?
Aye.
Dr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curry?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell?
Aye, motion carries. The next up is, I have our collateral assignments. Delaware County Community College, Mrs. Jordan?
On October 24th, Delaware County Community College hosted a dinner for all the participating school board members. It was a really nice evening. We heard from Dr. Black. She talked about a lot of the new initiatives that the college is going to, I guess, engage in. Right now, they do have a relationship with Westchester University, so after you finish your two years at Delaware County, they actually have teachers from Westchester come to the campus. After the meeting, just the liaisons met, and they are proposing a 1% increase to participating school districts next year.
Dr. Taylor, the Delaware County Intermediate Unit?
Yeah, the DCIU has a parent training workshop coming up. It's called Making Sense of Sensory Processing During Work and Play. The workshop will be on November 16th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the DCIU Morton location, and this interactive workshop is designed to help families learn about their child's sensory systems with a focus on ways in which sensory intervention can support their child's behavior and ability to learn and participate in their home and community activities and routines. This workshop is free to all Delaware County residents.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Home and School Report, Mrs. Jordan?
I can't remember if we met. In the beginning of October, Dr. McGary went through the different proposals for the pathway to graduation. I'm trying to think.
We went through safety and security measures. We went through the updates related to cameras. We talked about some personnel and what's heading on the district in the five-year equity plan, and then we'll have an update, another meeting on December 11th.
We were able to, this month, meet earlier because of the Thanksgiving holiday, to plan for the next committee meeting. And with the legislative grant that we have been given with our curriculum updates, you're going to see at the next meeting a new social studies curriculum that will be interactive, and part of the grant will also pay for Chromebooks specifically for those particular social studies classes. So, we are trying to accelerate our five-year technology plan by bringing it in through the curriculum. So, I just want to mention that tonight. Mr. Brown or Mr. Des Noirs, do you have anything from the PSBA, not the conference, from being the representatives to the PSBA?
Nothing, I would say.
Okay, okay. And then, Mrs. Jordan, do you have any updates from the Policy Committee?
Well, we met as a committee to review policy 316.1, armed security guards, and we're looking at December to bring that back as a read, as a first read, and I think that's what policy was that we're looking at.
Thank you, Mrs. Jordan. The PSBA conference, Mr. Brown and Ms. Curry?
Thank you. I had an opportunity to attend the PSBA School Leadership Conference in Hershey, PA, along with my colleagues, and one of the most important things that I felt that I was able to take away from the conference was the networking with districts from across the state. A lot of times, we don't even realize that our state is really composed of urban and then suburban and mostly rural school districts. And so, in a lot of the sessions that I was able to sit in, there were school districts there that were in rural settings that had some very big concerns that we don't even think about here in our setting. I was able to attend several great sessions. One was on resilience that can be taught, and it was giving educational professionals tools to empower participants to learn resilience and to deliver skills to students through equity of all backgrounds and learning styles, enabling the students to thrive in both school and in life. I also sat in on a very interesting session called Creating Future-Ready Schools and Classrooms, which talked about the physical structure of classrooms. If you can think back to the early 1900s, our classrooms are very much set up in rows with the teacher at the head. This particular session talked about the fact that we can prepare students for learning by transforming classrooms through teacher empowerment, personalized professional learning, innovative learning spaces, community partnerships, and digital learning initiatives. And I feel very happy to say that, at least in some of our presentations in the workshops today, we are actually implementing some of those things by having yoga and the PBIS. And then lastly, I wanted to just mention the fact that I sat in on a session called In Pursuit of Equity: Defining Equity in PA, and the presenter was the Equity Director for the PSBA, Dr. Bennett. And she talked about digital equity and inclusion, which we have in Upper Darby already addressed through the Comcast initiative. And then she also talked about cultural-relevant practices. They're practices that holding, hold schools, make sure schools affirm and include students and their families' cultural identities, experiences, voices, and values in their educational process, and I feel like Upper Darby has done a really good job of trying to keep that up through the equity process. And lastly, I was able to sit in on the delegate assembly and make decisions for the state of Pennsylvania through the PSBA, and I just thank you for the opportunity to be able to take part in the conference. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Curry.
I was also able to attend all three days of the conference. The first session I attended was the conference kickoff, the opening session, which was conducted by Robin, Dr. Robin Jackson, and it was an inspirational and informative session where she explained the dynamics of leadership and the differences between being a boss, a leader, and a builder. A builder is where we really want to be. I also attended a workshop called Learning Lab: Teaching Momentum. The focus was on the effective multi-tier support, system of supports, MTSS practices, which was presented by step-by-step learning and evaluated by Lehigh University, and it was very similar to our PBIS implementation that we have in our district, so I was really happy to see that. Another session that I thought was very valuable was the 21st Century Learning work focused on profiles of a graduate and the eight Cs. It was presented by Dr. Richard Frye, who's the superintendent of Big Spring Superintendent, and Dr. Eric Eschback, superintendent of Northern York County School District. Their focus was on the eight characteristics of a graduate: creative, creativity, communication, critical thinking, collaboration, contributing, courageous, competent, and conscientious. So, I thought that was very valuable. I'll just touch on a few more that I thought was very good. Parkland Ready 21, where the focus of their session was bridging the digital equity gap through personalized learning. Dr. Richard Sisneyak, superintendent of Parkland, presented their implementation of a personalized learning approach for disadvantaged families without computers via low-cost Wi-Fi and technology options, and I think we have that, something similar to that with Comcast. And I'll just touch on one more. I did also attend Equity 1 by Dr. Heather Bennett, which I thought was valuable, but I think Ms. Curry covered that. The last one was the closing session, and I thought that was the most powerful. Daryl Scott, who's the founder of Rachel's Challenge, his daughter was the first victim that was killed in the Columbine High School massacre, and based on that, he was inspired to create a program of empowerment and leadership that is being implemented across the nation at thousands of school districts. So, I did give that information to Dr. McGary, and hopefully he can see if there's a way we can implement that here. It was phenomenal, and I think it has efficacy in every school and every district in the country. Thank you.
I forgot to mention that Mr. Brown and I were in the Pursuit of Equity session, and Dr. Bennett actually referred us as a school district that was proactive in creating an equity pathway, and so we felt very proud about that because across the state of Pennsylvania, there's not a lot of schools that are really looking at equity, and there were people that were coming up to us, asking us about our equity plan, and we just started it, so I felt really good about that. Thanks.
Just one more thing, I skipped the Legislative Council. I was not able to attend it. Dr. Ritchie, were you able to attend? As I was attending the walk-to-school day for Hillcrest that morning, but we do meet next Wednesday. I'm hoping they have some turkey and stuffing, but I doubt it. We usually just have bad coffee. Does anyone else have any collateral assignments? No. Okay, is there any old business from board members? I also have some old business. Would you mind, if I go first? I would like to propose, with the support of the board, that the administration, please bring back to us a proposal for additional counselors for all levels of our school district to meet the needs of the college and career readiness standards that the state has put before us. Is anyone okay with that?
Absolutely. Just for a point of clarity, would you like us to use the national standards? We've been asked under Act 44, Mr. Gentio and myself, we met today with Wendy Elgar and Mr. Marshall Act, to begin preparation for this, and if we use the national standards, that would mean we'd be looking at one social worker for 250 students, one guidance counselor for 250 students. We've already begun to work on this. We'll start from there with those national standards, and it relates to nursing, psychologists, social workers, and bring that forward to you as we go through our budget process. Is that okay?
I think it's important that we make sure that we're meeting the needs of our students.
I have old business as well, if that's okay?
Yes.
I know that the board had reached out, and Dr. Taylor had asked us to come back. We have the cost, as well as Ms. Mitchell, to film board meetings and committee meetings, and then post them for people to go back and hear the information. For the entire year, I believe, Miss Bino, it's about $9,000 for us to cover these meetings as well as our committee meetings, and then post that information so people can go back and review the entire meeting.
Do I have a motion to support that?
So, move.
A second?
Say it.
Poll, do I need to take a poll vote, or is it at all in favor?
I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board?
I think that the proposal to increase the counselors by the recommendation of President Mitchell and the parents that are in the room that had concerns about the credit recommendations, with adding the counselors, we just, hopefully, that will help to support the students at the level that they need to be supported, so I'm in favor of that.
Okay, Mrs. Curry, we're not, the motion is on the, I'm sorry, on the, the video. Oh, the video. Okay, I heard about that. Are there any comments from the public? On poll vote, please, Mr. Grant?
Mr. Des Noirs?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Ritchie?
Aye.
Dr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curry?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Is there any other old business from board members? Okay, any new business from board members?
Just again, in the spirit of, we were able to plan a little earlier this time, the high school will be bringing forward, I believe it's six, social studies electives and three physical education electives at our next committee meeting, so I hope that you'll participate in that discussion. Is there any other old, new business? No? Okay. Then, we are now at the time for our public hearing. We'll call on Upper Darby residents who signed in to address the board in the order in which they signed in. We would ask that you come forward, give your name and address, and present your comments in a three-minute time limit. We have two speakers tonight, Mr. Nick Russo.
So, I know this is all a total waste of my time as reading my letter was, but I really have a question for all the board members, except for Ms. Jordan. Did anyone talk to anyone of a professional nature before you decided so blindly to embarrass our school district by lowering it to 21 credits? Because every principal, every superintendent, every teacher I talked to over the last two weeks laughed and thought it was a joke. From Southeast Delco, from Pinewood, from every district around us, is higher. Did anyone even think to ask the ramifications of this lowering of the standard? I talked to people that were in higher positions than everybody in this room, real superintendents, real principals, who actually said, "It's going to just lower your standard, it's going to embarrass our school district more, and people are not going to move in here." And here in some of the comments, the Facebook, your community members who voted you in said, "Follow the money," is what I'd like to say is driving this initiative. While there may be some examples of students who would be readily academically and socially for early graduation, that is not the norm. To put that spin of lowering requirements is short-sighted at best and dishonest at its cool. This is about cutting costs in our financially struggling district. That's apparent. Here is a teacher who also lives in the district. Obviously, they really don't care about the kids. They are looking to save money and chase kids out of our school as soon as possible. The next thing you know, students will be able not to fail. Pushed on so they can leave early. Better get rid of them now, they're working on them. Our three kids went through Upper Darby High School and did great, but had to work. Now, just push them down the slide and get them out. Former teacher and school, and an actual community member who still lives in the school district. So, that's all I can say is, I am embarrassed for our school district, I'm embarrassed for the school board that decided so blindly. Why couldn't we table it and actually talk about it before it was pushed through? Because now, we will deal with the ramifications later on. That's all I can say.
Thank you, Mr. Russo. Mrs. Kirsten Russo?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. A motion is in order for adjournment. On favor? Aye.
Good night.